Margaret, Steve, what about John? Ready? All right, let's call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the City of Mountain House City Council Meeting for Wednesday, March 12, 2025. The mayor calls the city clerk to take role.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tingel?
Here.
Mayor Sue?
Here.
And let the record reflect that Councilmember Disco is absent.
He'll be here in a bit. All right, let's have a moment of silence. All right, Councilmember Harrison, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. Anybody want to make any changes or deletions? And we're adding the oath and introduction of the crossing guards. Anything else, though?
No.
No? I make the motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of the...
The crossing guard. Can I get a second?
A second.
Role call.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingel?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Disco absent.
Item five is public comments. At this time, the public is invited to make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. That's a long sentence, and that are not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. I'd like to remind everyone about the guidelines under the Brown Act. Items brought up during the public comment that are not on today's agenda cannot be discussed or acted upon by the council. However, the city council can refer these matters to staff for follow-up or make brief responses. Items necessitating response will be included in the next city manager update and posted on the city's website. I think we have two today. Mr. Igor Kishlev.
Hello, Mayor Sue and councilmembers. My name is Igor Kishlev. Thank you for letting me speak here. There is no public transit in our city. The last attempt to connect the city with ACE was canceled about five years ago when COVID isolation started. More and more organizations call people back to the office at least a few days a week. We have a lot of commuters that need connection with ACE bar T-Valley. They all have to add even more cars to the busy Altamont Pass due to the lack of any other alternatives. Just recently, the topics were discussed again in the Mountain House Facebook community. I have talked about the topics multiple times in the last few years. Despite everyone being in agreement that the city should start discussion of available options every time it was put on hold. It was suggested to do surveys to see interests and need. Then it was suggested to wait while we become a city to have more options or money for them. Lastly, what I heard was a plan to order research on transportation needs. I have not heard any news for several months on it. Some work happens on Plan Valley Link terminals and transit center, but it is still years before it will be completed. We need some interim solutions right now. Previous attempts demonstrated that we probably would not have enough people to support our own bus, partly due to the fact that our own bus road will have very few runs a day, which will require careful planning for people. But there is RTD commuter road 100 feet that connects Stockton, Latrop, and Tracy with Bart. It already does four runs a day. It just passed along our city without stopping here. Can we start some discussion on adding stop for it in our city boundaries? Is it possible for the city to start looking into public transit options? Do required transportation and research and start discussion options for adding something for commuters here without putting it on hold for a few more years? Thank you a lot.
Thank you, Igor. You want to make a brief response or no?
We can respond at the next meeting.
Okay. Next.
Mayor, I know that the staff's working on something, and they have been, so...
Yeah.
Something that will be coming.
Next, we have Roxanne. How do you say your last name?
Good evening, council. There are just two little items that I just wanted to bring to your attention. The first one is the almond orchard that's across from Safeway. A few weeks ago, on a Saturday, a car came veering off. I was going down J4 towards Tracy, and a car came veering in front of me. And I literally skid off and went on the side of the road right in front there. And while I was there, there was about 62 people, I counted them. They were in the orchard, trompsing through the orchard, destroying the crop that was there, which I was a little concerned about. And there were even people up in the trees taking TikTok videos. I know there's nothing you can do, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. And the second item that I had is I live in Mountain House. I, there was a coyote that was shot and killed over there. And it was a little disturbing that somebody would actually do that to an animal. So I don't know if there's been any other violent acts towards animals around here, but that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item six. Recognition, announcements, and presentations. Do you want to go down now?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna, let's see, what's the... All right, fine, we'll do the youth action committee first, and then we'll squeeze in the crossing guard. All right, come on up.
And I'd like to announce who's coming up. Each, second Tuesday each month, the youth action committee meets in, here in the town hall, and it's a very productive group of kids from sixth to the 12th grade. And after the meetings, following our council meeting, a student from the youth department gives a report out. This week, this month, we're honored to have Adua to give us a report on what the youth action committee is doing. Thank you. So if you'll state your name, first and last, your school, your age.
Okay, so my name is Duan Nadeem. I attend Bethany, and I'm 14 years old. So I'm discussing the meeting notes from March 11. So there is YAC academics, the PVSA, which is the Presidential Volunteer Service Award, the council committee reports, and the summer camp planning, which were discussed. So for YAC academics, there's a good ratio of students, which doubled from last year. There was a slight dip during testing, but it recouped with freshman volunteers. For PVSA, so basically, there was a point address for YAC to be eligible for the PVSA, which is basically a volunteering award from the government. And based on the number of hours you get and whether you're in middle or high school, you can get different tiers, which are bronze, silver, and gold in the award. For the council committee reports, we discussed marketing, membership, and outreach. For marketing, we discussed approval processes, boundaries, and limitations, and also how social media could be used as a good promotion method. Mrs. Will brought up a filmmaker that could be useful for the promotion videos. And we also discussed other contacts that could be useful for real-making and marketing. For membership, we discussed the summer camp weekly forum, which is due on March 21. And we also discussed the outreach. So there's a council member change, so Joshua switched for Ravi. We discussed the PVSA, like I mentioned earlier, and also the CVGCA health fair, where 500 to 1,000 people showed up. So it was very crowded, which is a good thing, but we decided to discuss a new location and a new date for more efficiency. And then finally, for the summer camp planning, which is basically, the summer camp is our trademark event, which starts in June and ends in July. So for that, we have five weeks. The sports week, health and safety week, the science and innovation week, the art week, and the career development week. So the week of June 23, which is the health week, we have the firefighters and police come over to teach students. So in that, we discussed what happened in last year's summer camp to make improvements for this year. And we decided in career development, which is targeted for middle schoolers this year, and on each day, we'd have a focus on another extracurricular, such as DECA, HOSA, and speech and debate. So we also had volunteers come up to share some points based on what they observed in last year's summer camp. So first, we observed adding more variety for the younger groups. And then we also discussed more volunteer commitment, as last year, there were many getting distracted or distracting other students, so that we could get things done more efficiently and better. In the future, we will mainly be focusing on the summer camp because it's coming up very soon. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the detailed report. I think you recaptured every moment, which we try to keep these down to three minutes or less, but thank you because you did feature everything that was discussed last night. And thank you. So are there questions from the audience or the board? Thank you, Dua. You did a very good job.
Great job, Dua. Now we're gonna renumber this item 6.15. The mayor calls for the crossing guards and administers the oath of office. Should I do them all at the same time? So you guys come up here, and I'll read the oath. All right.
Mr. Mayor and council?
Oh, Bob.
Bob. Mayor, council, guests, we've done this before, but we're pretty special this time. We are now at 24 members total, which is pretty great. But what I'd like to do is, just for a brief minute, turn it over to one who's kind of pushy. Join right behind him.
All right.
What you just saw was a result of two hours of intense training, and these people and three others that couldn't be here tonight finished the training a couple weeks ago. So I had mentioned earlier that we are now up to 24, and they are required to attend an orientation and then go through two hours of practical academic training, and then they have to go out to the street and not try to get hit during training. Since then, we've actually issued several citations out in the public to the motorists that are not watching, listening, or doing what they're told. So what we'd like to do now is have the mayor swear these folks in as official crossing guards, and then we'll move forward.
All right. Crossing guards can give citations?
We wish. My biggest fear right now is that we have one crossing guard, and I'm not going to mention her name at all, but I'm pretty sure the first citizen's complaint we get's going to come against her. But again, we don't know who it is, but you can pick.
Rex, is that the one that had to remediate?
Yeah, we do teach to the test now.
All right, so we'll have him face this way and raise your right hand, and then repeat after me. I'll try to go slowly. That's a long paragraph here. So I, state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. All right.
Congratulations. We thank you for your volunteerism and your service, and we'll get those passed out to you here.
Well, we're gonna pass out certificates, so please stay right there. The council's gonna come down.
As the council goes back to their seats, we have some others in the audience that are supporting them. We plan on having at the end of the school year a recognition kind of event for all the crossing guards, but we are continuously recruiting. So if you know people, especially we have some schools that still don't have anybody. So we'll run this until we get them all full. Thank you.
Wait, did you say we're doing more?
Yeah, we should try to keep increasing the number.
Maybe throw a big party for them at the end of the year on Steve's dime. We should, yeah. I wasn't kidding. All right, so let's move on to item 6.223. Kidding. Lammersville Unified School District Update. Former president Stephanie Olson. Well, look at you guys are matching today. You and Bernice. Matching. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Sue, councilmembers. Mr. Pinkerton, it's my pleasure to be here with you this evening to report about Lammersville. I'll start with our enrollment numbers. We are at 8,032 students. And we are going to be growing. That number will be a lot bigger at the beginning of the 2025-2026 school year. And as far as what's happening right now, spring sports are in full swing. That means that at the middle schools, we have soccer games happening for both boys and girls, and we have all sorts of sports at the high school: baseball, softball, golf, volleyball, track and field. So there's a lot of activities that can be supported, and you can find the schedules on the athletics website of the high school. Some good news, the high school mock trial team placed third at the county competition, and our student board member, Devika Vidalani, took home a lot of awards. She won a best attorney award. She earned a $500 scholarship for being the best attorney, and then she also earned an experience valued at $3,500 to attend a UOP clinic for future lawyers. And so we're very proud of her and of the entire team. CASP testing is coming up, and so school sites are getting ready and preparing students to be at their best so that they can continue to thrive as they have been. And we also have our spring break coming up at the end of April. I would like to conclude by making sure that everyone is aware that our beautiful theater that the community helped build with the bond that we passed years ago, will be having a musical, Les Misérables, on six nights. So there's a great opportunity for everybody to attend, April 11, 12, and 13, and then the following week on April 17, 18, and 19. And we would love to fill up that beautiful theater every night. People from San Francisco Broadway will be there on opening night to monitor our students and adjudicate them for potential awards. So that's an exciting thing that will happen, and I hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the report. I really enjoy hearing about how many students we have, and I do like to also get the information of how many students we have per school, because we are growing, if you have that next time.
I didn't want to take up too much time, so I didn't give those numbers, but I can tell you that at present, Altamont Elementary School has 624 students, Bethany Elementary 772, Cordus Elementary 870, Costa Elementary 630, Hanson Elementary 940, Lammersville Elementary School 212, Cuesta Elementary School 829, Wickland Elementary School 692. We have 29 students in the Lammersville Education Online, and at Mountain House High School, 2432 students.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number seven, city council consent items. Consent agenda items will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member or member of the public may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Mayor asks the council or the public if there are any items you want to pull or any questions about. No, nothing? The mayor requests a council member to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingel?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Disco absent.
All right, let's move on to item 8.1. Approval of Bethany Neighborhood Park and Bethany Pocket Park Playground. Oh, we're gonna get new playgrounds? Awesome. Doug Louis, Playground Superintendent.
Good evening, Mayor Sue and council. Make sure I hit the right arrows. This is the right side up, right?
Oh, jeez.
I always do.
That's the Playground Superintendent.
Yes. Approve a contract with Ross Recreation Equipment for $1,153,564.53 to replace and install playground equipment at Bethany Neighborhood Park for $741,112.86 and at Bethany Pocket Park for $412,451.67, including a 10% contingency for each. And authorize, of course, our city manager to take necessary actions to implement this project. Back on September 25th of last year, we approached the board with an evaluation of all 10 playgrounds in the district, and out of that assessment, we determined that both Bethany Parks were in the poorest condition, requiring renovation. And so the council directed staff to return with installation options and for possible We selected landscape structures after vetting about four different companies. They've been, they founded in 1971, they've been around since '73. Steve King invented the continuous play concept, which is a process where a child could actually play from one apparatus to the next, and they offer great innovative designs. Ross is the distributor of landscape structures, and they've been around since 1973. They've been serving Northern California since then for about 30 years. So this is the pirate concept, and we've looked at several companies in several different pirate ships, and actually pirate ships that looked a bit cartoonish, different colors, loud ones, calm ones. This one offered pretty much a more authentic look to it, and it had actually great features. It had landscape structures, actually provides a great pathway for kids to play on apparatus throughout the whole concept. Next slide. This is another angle of it. This particular apparatus would have to be modified to fit within the borders of the park, because it's so large, so it would have to be shortened slightly, but not too much to where it would change the structure. Next slide. These are the features around the structure, and we could interchange those with different things, which I'll show you in the next several slides. And the one thing about this structure is it did not allow for room for swings. So as you know, everybody loves swings, and if I didn't put swings in, I'm sure we would probably hear that. So what we did in this project is push out the borders. Next slide. And next slide. And next slide. These are, this is the overhead shot, so you can see where we pushed the borders out to the south of the area, and this provided enough room to install swings. And it'll accommodate two swings. So we were able to do that. So in the 2 to 5 Bethany Park, we took more of a treehouse whimsical approach to it. One of the main things I wanted to do there and looked for was a really nice post and platform apparatus that was compact, because the area is pretty small, but also include a nice selection of swings. And of course, this is for 2 to 5, and in these swings here, if you see on the next slide, actually has a swing that both a parent and child could actually sit in and face each other in swing. I think it's on the next slide. There it is, right there. So that's pretty awesome. I hear a lot of great comments on that swing there. Also has the swings in the center that keep a child safe, and the typical bucket swings you see on the very end. So five swings and all. So we went through a staff survey to begin with, and what I wanted to do is get the technical side of the survey completed, and this was with both engineering staff and recreation staff. And what we looked at is usability, of course, through recreation, but also the safety aspect and the building of the playground. So there was different things that I put forth in the questionnaire that they commented on, and as you can see, all the way across on the right-hand columns, the totals, that Landscape Structures scored very high, and Compan scored lowest. So that was a great approach to starting, you know, the survey for the community. We offered 28 different samples of apparatus, and we launched it on the 14th. We kept it out there for two weeks, and we attracted 42 participants, which I see as 42 households, which is actually pretty good. In the past, when we did these type of surveys publicly, we wouldn't get as near as many people visiting. So it actually was a very good turnout. So each item was, had a photo, and everyone would put a score of 1 through 10 on that photo, and we would score it appropriately. Through that process, for 2 to 5, we scored the apparatus, as you see here, and then on the next slide, it was quite a few pieces. So what staff will do is select some of the more popular pieces to install in that playground. You could see the community or the interactive boards that could be put in and out. They're interchangeable, cost is about the same on any one of those, and so they're actually, you know, easy to select. So staff will be going through this selection and putting that together. So I have a lot of information on cooperatives, and I know we've used them in the past, and it's a vehicle to which, that basically it's a, let me get this perfectly correct, because Jody put a lot of work into this. So she vetted the process. We use cooperatives in the past, and it's an organization that combines buying power throughout the nation. And so these nonprofit corporations put this buying power together to negotiate the best purchasing power through selective equipment. And in that process, they create a contract for several years, which then, under that contract, we're allowed to take part in as a member of that cooperative. So there's a lot of technical aspects to it, but what Ms. Almasi did was she vetted the whole operation and selection process to make sure that we were doing it correctly. And that's why we took an additional four weeks to approach the council. So that's all been vetted, it's proper. We're within our ordinances and policies, I should say. This also provides, you know, the cooperative actually works in our favor, because they represent us as far as buying. And what they do is they take an approach to where we would take the same approach if we went out to a public bid. But their power is just so much greater than ours that they can actually get better pricing, they serve us, and they help us select the correct equipment. And so through that process, what's also important is on playgrounds, if I was to put, I want a pirate ship out to bid, how do you select out of several different pirate ships when you really like one pirate ship? So in this process, this cooperative process helps you select the one apparatus you truly like, and it provides you the best price for that apparatus. So it's really a win-win for everybody. It cuts down on administrative costs. It cuts, since it's pretty much all-inclusive, it cuts down on multiple bids that we have to put out for construction and whatnot. So it really saves a lot of money for the city. This is a layout of the cost for the Bethany Pocket Playground and Bethany Neighborhood Playground. As you can see here, I broke down the material sales tax and librarian fees and freight and the contingency, and it adds up to $1,153,564.53. We have money in our budget. of just under 1.2. All said and done, we have just under 20,000 left over. So our recommendation is, I would like to repeat that, but to approve the justification pursuant to the City Financial Management Manual Section 210. Approve use of our Cooperative Purchase Agreement under the National Purchasing Partners. Approve the contract in the combined amount of the $1,153,564.53, and the contract for the same combined amount. Authorize the city manager to take appropriate action. Now, I would love to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions on the left. Harrison.
I went ahead and researched Ross, and they have a very good reputation. I believe they provide most places with the playgrounds, from what I understand. So like you said, they've been here for a while.
They are.
And they've been recommended. So I thank the staff for the vetting that they did, because it seems like this is a really good corporation.
Ross Landscape Structures is the third largest in the world as far as production of equipment, and Ross has by far been in California for many years, providing excellent service. So they've been around a long time.
Anybody on, Councilmember Green?
I do have a question. So more clarifying question. So it's a whole structure. So if a piece of the structure breaks, are we able to replace just those parts of the structure, or is it the whole thing? I thought I heard you say it's, we can replace parts of it if something happens.
Yeah, it's all repairable. Yes, they could actually take pieces off, put pieces back on. Most of the apparatuses, even in other companies, were like that. So yes, it's all bolted together and fastened with, you know, tamper-proof fasteners, of course.
And then another question would be, when you expand it out, the playground, what part of that is going to be taken? Where is that expansion taken from?
If you're familiar with Bethany Park, it's towards the picnic tables that are in the area that connect to the schoolyard. And at first, they wanted to use that area. I said, no, no, you can't use that pathway, because of course, that's right in the pathway of the kids. I was very concerned of keeping it away from, you know, where the kids come out of school and walk because of vandalism and whatnot, and even danger of people swinging. But it is pretty far away from where that area is.
Okay. And my last question is, the blue stuff on the bottom, I don't know what it's called.
Oh, it's rubber pouring place.
Right. During the summer, that gets really hot.
Well, so I'm glad you brought that up. So in those photos, it showed that there was pouring place in there. We have taken, we have taken that out.
Okay.
And we're going to go with the fire bar filler. It's at a fraction of the cost, and what we do is we fill it up every year with brand-new bark, and it actually, here in Mountain House, it performs excellent. There's no vandalism on the surfacing. If you remember, a lot of the playgrounds deteriorated, and the kids love peeling it up and throwing it out on the grass. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's a massive.
Yeah, we saved about, it was about $150,000.
Okay.
Just not putting that in.
Councilmember Ernest Tiffka.
I'm sorry to miss majority of your presentation, so I might be speaking out of terms, but did we discuss accessibility and access for ADA on this unit?
Yes. It's all-inclusive, meaning that there are certain apparatuses that children can go up to and play from either a wheelchair or from the ground, climbing areas and like that. It's, you know, there's some that is going to be more difficult to access without help, but that's the whole purpose of this apparatus.
Okay. And then Steve, is this going to the conference next week for play apparatuses and stuff? Should we consider that before making a decision tonight?
No.
Because it's six months out if we do that route, right?
Right. I mean, that was more for your information for the future.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the event next week, I'll be looking at that event for future playgrounds in the next few months. Yeah.
Is Altamont in the next replacement cycle?
In the next replacement cycle, if I was to guess, it would probably be Questa.
Does Questa even, oh, before Altamont? Okay. Altamont doesn't have a whole lot.
What I'd like to do to Altamont is add.
Add.
But it'll, we'll have a chance to discuss that coming up, definitely.
Which company did Wickland? Was it one of those four?
Oh, boy, you're testing me. I can't recall.
It wasn't one of the four, though?
Yeah, it was one of the four.
Yeah, it wasn't Ross, though, right?
No, it wasn't Ross.
It was one, I think I remember the names for one of those, but, okay.
Yeah, I should have had that.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comments at this point? No? All right. Any final discussion from the board? Harrison? Green? Tingel? All right, then let's get a motion. Move forward.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve 8.1, Approval of Bethany Neighborhood Park and Bethany Pocket Park Playground Replacement Project.
You a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingel?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you.
She wants to know how long before this is done? Six months, right?
So.
12 weeks? Oh, no, three months.
It's going to take about four or five months to get the materials and equipment in.
Oh, you said four, you said four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks to build.
And four to six weeks to get the equipment?
Four to six, four to six months for delivery.
A month?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it looked at weeks.
Yeah, it's deceptive. It's the same numbers, but different.
Oh, okay, so then we're looking at six months plus?
Yeah, and I'll be pushing them.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to get it in before the middle of the summer, you know.
All right.
But, you know.
Great. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is for 8.2.
Yeah. Let's go to 8.2.
I'm just bad luck. I think I have static electricity in me. Push it down? Oh, jeez.
Operator error. Operator error.
See, I'm optimistic. I push the up arrow. The recommendation here is to authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the agreement A-2425-06 with St. Francis Electric to provide traffic signals, streetlight maintenance services, including as-needed repairs. This will increase the contract $333,289.89 for a total contract amount not to exceed The contract term is July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2027, and there's also two additional two-year extensions at the discretion of the council. Next slide. Oh, that's me. Okay. Background, on June 12th, 2024, the board authorized the general manager executing a an agreement with St. Francis for traffic signal and streetlight maintenance services in the amount of $283,718.66, and it began on July 1st of 2024. It expires, like I said previously, June 30th in 2027 with the two-year extensions. The current contract provides a unit price flat rate for routine preventative maintenance repairs, specific to traffic signals, streetlights. They do the flashing beacons, the speed detection signs, and, and things like that according to a scope of work. The scope of work includes a certain level of maintenance and repairs, and, but it, it stops at a certain point where if there's any other damage, say from accidents, from vandalism, from rodents, as you see here, that crawl up into boxes and chew wires, it, it does not cover that. However, we do unit price repairs out to where we have the pricing bid out and competitively bid so that we apply towards what used to be a voucher system. What this does here, so every year, we, we budget these repairs, but it was not encompassed in the contract cost. So procedures now, what we're, what we're providing the council is to encompass everything. And, and what this does is it encompasses the cost of these extra repairs into the contract. So basically, the budget has not changed. It's still the same. This just is a technicality to get the, the contract up to that certain level to encompass that. In the background, on June 12th, 2024, the board... Yeah, that's weird.
We're going backwards.
Yeah, I'm not pressing the right arrows. I apologize. So if we're...
Down two more.
Yeah, that's what I wanted. Okay. I'm going to have to hold this upside down, maybe. So this is the table to show the breakdown of, of the cost, and you can see the base maintenance cost across the top of each year is what we tallied up as the base maintenance cost that includes minor repairs. The line underneath each year ancillary repairs is the additional repairs that basically I estimate in the budget based off of historical repairs. So it is an estimate on what we feel we're gonna, we're going to repair. Of course, as you know, the past year or so, we've had an onslaught of accidents out there. And, you know, we recover what we can, and there's other items that are hit and run or vandalism or, or things like that. So the, the, the $617,000 was in the budget or is in the budget, and, and now we're going to keep that into the contract or bring it into the contract.
It went backwards again.
Jeez.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Doug?
No, come on. This, it's not me.
Questions?
No, that is it. That is, that is the end. It's a very short presentation.
All right.
I know, it's...
Any questions from the council? Harrison?
Thank you. Is this the existing company that we've used, St. Francis?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there, do they have a mechanism in place that, like a motherboard, something that tells them when, when one of our streetlights ain't working? Or do they, do we just depend on a ticket that goes through, and then all of a sudden we call them out for it?
Yeah, we, so there's, there's two ways we could approach this. What we used to do in the past, because there, there were metal halide lights, and they actually went out quite often, is we had night checks. And the night checks, we would hire them to come in and drive all night long on roadways. And whether they did it or not, we couldn't tell because we don't have GPS on them. And the result was they would come back with, you know, some lights that were burned out, but they would never catch all of them. So we would have to pay all that money upfront and then also get work orders in to repair almost the same amount. Since we switched to LED, these lights last much, much longer. Of course, we have much, we have many more. So what we did, and I, I researched this with other cities, is the other cities wait for the work order to come in. And it's a, it's a thing that the citizens will report it, and they do report it quickly. And we, we report it to St. Francis that same day, and they get it, and it creates a work order, and they usually get to it between one to two weeks. Unless there's an issue with other major components in the light, which is the case sometimes on LED. So then we have to order in extra components that might take an additional week or two, or there could even be a, a, a short in, in the system. So, but most of the time, I'd say 80 to 90% of those lights are, are repaired within 14 days.
I know St. Francis, a lot of cities contract with them. I, I even saw that in the report here. And they have a lot of employees, too. I would just ask that, maybe that they dedicate some folks to, you know, Mountain House and maybe a little bit quicker than two weeks getting, because, you know, even right now, you drive around, we have some lamps that are either crooked or broken or out, or we have, what I'm seeing is they're on during the daylight, some of them, and, and then the rest of them are off. So that's why I was asking if there was something that triggers.
Right. So they're, they're here nearly every day. So it's a backlog. So that when I say 14 days, it's, it depends on the backlog. It could be much shorter if the backlog starts, you know, getting better. But normally, that backlog doesn't exceed 14. The amount accrues, I mean, if I was to say I want everything fixed the day of, every day, it would, the scope and specification in the contract would have to state that, and the cost would go up quite a bit. You know, it's just, within 14 days is probably better than 90% of the cities in California because sometimes you have to wait a month or two in other cities to get a streetlight fixed. We're pretty good at, at our reaction and, and response time.
Yeah. And the only other thing I have, it's not concern their company, but we had that one truck that came into our area that wasn't even supposed to be in here, and he took out the pole on Main Street. Did we recover the finances from that company?
Yeah, any, any accident like that, that's reported through the sheriff, we, we start processing that immediately and investigate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, Tingle?
I had a quick question. First of all, thank you for the report, especially on the data, on the, the finance. And, and I like that the ancillary repairs are in there. And I know we do, but I just want to ask, are we tracking our estimate to actuals on repairs? I like that it's in there because anything is going to break and need repair. But so are we kind of looking at, will we be tracking our estimate to actuals so in the future years, we're making sure that we're on target for repairing?
I, I'm a number nerd. So what I, what I do is I, I take the last four to five years, and I, I look at the averages and the trends. And, you know, I calculate then into the preceding three years when I start forming my budgets. So it's kind of a game with me where I bet you I can hit that number.
And that's how I am, and that's why I'm asking estimate to actuals. So I'd see if we're estimating and see if we, in future years, would have to put more into repairs or less or what have you. But I do like the estimate to actuals.
Yeah, the, the approach I took in budgeting was probably more liberal than I do now with it within the contract. So now, now I, I'm trying to get even closer to the number because I don't want to inflate the contract cost too much, you know? But you're right. Like I said, it doesn't really change the amount because it's a not to exceed. Our, our plan is to, to hit it almost exactly, but also not to exceed it. So in some cases, if we have a bad year like this year, in the last year of the contract, we may need to approach the board for, for more money. But, you know, we're going to get as close as we can.
Thank you.
And, and part of it's going to be a factor of how many more neighborhoods get completed and turned over to the city as well. Obviously, the more streets and streetlights we have, the higher, even though they're new neighborhoods, you're still going to have accidents in those neighborhoods. So that's the other thing that does, has to factor in. For example, we are just now, just recently took possession of pretty much everything south of Grantline Road.
Right.
So that's a significant increase in our responsibility.
Yeah, I work with, with development to get those dates in. And so when I do forecast, I, I ask, well, when is this neighborhood going to be completed? And, you know, I, I, I put those in. So I calculate out for the whole term of that contract, how many lights I, I think I'm going to have at the end. So I, you know, it depends on how quickly we build or maybe how slowly. But usually, I could tell just how many homes are being built to the point where I can almost get it pretty, pretty close.
Good. I like to see repairs in there because they certainly will have to happen.
It's real.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tinko?
Okay, so I have a few. First, what are the terms for the extension if we do, to go with a two-year? Is there any percentage increase year over year? And what is the cancellation risk if we decide to terminate on that?
Oh, there's no cancellation risk. The, the increases are based off of CPI, and, and so they're limited to 3% per year. The, the extension is really at, at the discretion of the council. The reason for extensions, though, is because in a maintenance contract, when efficiencies are experienced, especially towards the end of the contract, instead of changing a contractor and becoming less efficient with a new contractor, you, and actually, everything's been going well, and they've been serving, you know, Mountain House well, you want to extend it because that efficiency is carried over into the following year. So it's a win-win. If they're not, if they're doing poorly, you have that way out and say, no extensions, and let's go out to bid. So.
And then the second question is, what is the estimated percentage that we increased in terms of these types of fixtures with the annexation of College Park? Like, did we double the amount of streetlights we have with College Park? Was it 30% more? That, I mean, we're, we're like 190% increase here. So I'm trying to understand and gauge how much more we took on.
Yeah, it's, it's not 100 and, it's...
It's the maintenance and repairs, 20-year-old stuff, and lamp posts falling down on Central. That's all I get it.
Let me see if I can answer you correctly. So, so the streetlights are unit-priced out, and, and as we add them, it, it increases the contract cost per light. So with each unit-priced light, it includes a certain amount of maintenance. So yeah, your contract's going to build as you add more lights. The, the ongoing maintenance is, in, in extra repairs, like the ancillary repairs that I'm trying to add into the contract, those lights aren't going to impact as much as the older lights, you know? So really, the older lights are going to impact you more because of feeling components and electronics, you know, than these newer lights. Because also, we're dealing with warranties. I could, we get the lights, I have a, a year warranty, I turn them in. You know, same, same thing with signals, traffic signals and whatnot. So it's, it's very incremental, but it's all measured. So there's, there's really, it's all in control. I don't have that number for College Park. I apologize. But we are working on our GIS system to where I should have an exact amount that I could see every day as they add.
But the, the developer has resolved all the issues with the strobing streetlights? Like, we're not paying...
I'm not dealing with this line, like...
Steve, the, the strobing issues with the street lamps and lamps?
Oh, so the strobing issues have to do with, with a, with a operating program called Y-Scape. And so when this, these systems were designed, you have photo sensors on the lights, but you have also Y-Scape. So it conflicted. It conflicted back and forth. So, and I couldn't get into the technical aspects of it, but they, they were fighting each other.
But that's been resolved? Like, we're not spending a significant amount? Or if it is an issue, it's under warranty, and they cover the repair costs?
Absolutely. So in fact, that's kind of a hot button right now, and that will be repaired.
Okay.
That is...
And that's one of the reasons that we didn't accept those improvements for extended period of time.
Sure.
Yeah.
And then my last question is, I've reported the central and arnado eastbound sensor on the, on the, the, the traffic left and straight turn? And it's, I don't know, she uses it more than I can, so maybe she can speak more to that. But it's just, seems like it's an ongoing issue in that the sensor...
Yeah, don't get me going on I-Terris because that system I was very disappointed in. We're very invested into the system. It's, it's, you know, in our, in our, you know, we have to put it in. Back in the day, when we had normal loops in the roadway, it was pretty normal. You drive up, it senses it, and it changes light. What impacts I-Terris at certain times of the year is, is glare and, and sometimes fog. We don't usually have fog here, but the, the glare gets into the lens and has to be adjusted. And so that's what affects, once, once the glare hits the radar camera, it goes into more of a timed mode.
And now, now you mentioned that, I noticed it is always in afternoons and sunset that I have that issue, so.
It's temporary.
Okay. And then just last thing to kind of build on what Ms. Brittany said. So out of the estimated total of $617,000 of the new contract not to exceed, before your buffer, what do you think your projected amount is for this contract term on a, I don't know, on a single-year basis? So like, you said you added some buffer, right? You went back and looked at the data, and then you kind of set what your average was? So is it...
It's actually on the table. Oh, I got the, oh, boy.
I think I took a picture of it.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, I've been fired off the remote. That's, that's why I always give it to my wife.
Yeah, this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, so you could see the layout here, and it's, it's, it's really a percentage base, but...
You can see the base maintenance charge is the, based on the, the ongoing base charge, and then the ancillary is the estimate of how much repair we're going to be, we'll be required to estimate of repair, you can see between the four categories each year.
Yeah, and I broke it up into categories, public works, roads, parks, facilities. And, and actually, the budget was more liberal. I added more to the budget than what you see here. I just wanted to encompass and be very conservative on, on the contract cost. And so it hasn't really changed, it hasn't changed anything in the budget. We have plenty of budget money, and it's been budgeted. This just basically tells the council, this is what we think we're actually going to spend with this contractor.
And there's no guarantee we're even going to hit that mark, right? This is just what you're budgeting for up to?
Yeah, not to exceed.
Okay.
And yeah.
Go on, thank you.
It's our estimated worst-case scenario of repairs.
Councilmember Green?
Well, the good thing about she's going last is that you answered most of the questions that I had written down. But I, I did want to ask, like, about regular routine maintenance. So this is, we have a regular routine maintenance on all of this stuff, but we also have the added where something just goes out. Because, you know what I mean?
So the, yeah, so the, the routine maintenance is mostly to keep the traffic signals up and running, serviced, so they don't break down. And so they try to catch things before they do happen. The streetlights are more of a reactive type facility because if, if they go out, we go fix. And there's really nothing you can do to prevent that. If they're on, we're good.
So there's, there's not like a, every six months, you go out and routinely check? There's no components or anything that you can just...
There's, yeah, there's no way to...
So it's on-call as something? Okay.
Now, now, with, with these new, with the new technology coming out and Y-Scape and all these new programs, there are programs that can do analytics, and that's, it, it would have to be applied to the entire city, but those could tell you if some, there's outages. So of course, you need someone running that huge program and understanding it because it gets complicated. But right now, it's a reactive type service.
Right now, we just look at a little flicker and if the lights flicker in, we call somebody.
We depend on our community to, to send in the work order, and we're very quick at turning it around.
No other questions? Public comments? No? Have any further discussion? Negative? How about a motion then?
I'll motion to approve it.
Can I get a second?
8.2.
I can second that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tinko?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Let's move on to 8.3. A resolution... Let's move on to eight point three. A resolution approving the proposed municipal emergency management plan, MEMP, to enhance the city's preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation efforts for emergencies and disasters. Mayor calls on Bob, I mean Rex.
Before I start, I want you to focus in on the picture that you see up there. I'm going to maybe click it to move forward, and I want you to watch it. It's 27 seconds long. The municipal emergency management program is not new to Mountain House. What has happened in the 30-some years is that we are now a city, and some responsibilities have changed from the county, as you know, from the district, to now specifically lands on your shoulders. I'm going to walk you through our, a very high look at our emergency management plan. And we're going to talk a little bit about the responsibilities of the plan. We're going to talk about the action that needs to be taken, and what the future holds for it. So I mentioned a couple weeks ago that we really focus on a couple things, mitigation and prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery. I told you, we apply that to almost everything we do in public safety. And you'll see that nationwide. Of course, we have our city seal, but then you see that group of people at the end there. Up until today, when you approved the resolution, you really got to ride the shirt tails of San Joaquin County. And trust me, they're still there, and we're still going to ride them, but we're going to work towards more of an independence. The operating area for the San Joaquin County doesn't just mean Stockton or other cities, it's everybody as a whole. Now, you have some responsibilities, and they're very specific responsibilities. One, you, by just being our city council, are obligated to protect the city, the citizens, the residents, and staff. And really, that is the obligation. You provide policy and direction. You hire a manager who provides staff direction. And that's a huge responsibility. And one of the biggest ones is to keep us and everybody else safe. So we have some lessons that we learned, and I, and I can look around the room, and I can pick out a couple people that'll remember this date. One, it's my birthday, so that's, you write that down, just remember. October 19th, 1991 was in a kind of an important time in our lives. This is when this state and the nation realized we were not prepared. When this took place, there was a small brush fire in Oakland. And then it spread, and it spread because people had fuel, or they didn't take care of their yards, their weed abatement, whatever it might have been. Then it got to the point where, at the time, it was the worst fire in the history of the United States. Well, we've doubled that other places, Paradise, Los Angeles just recently. So the fires don't go away because you're prepared, it's what you do for it. So now, here's some of the lessons that were learned, just so people know. When that fire happened, many police agencies and fire agencies were called upon to come and help. You only have so many people. Good example, here in Mountain House, our police services tonight will have one officer on, and he needs help, they're going to call others. It could very well be Tracy, it could be the additional sheriff, it could be Manteca, it could be Alameda, whoever's closest comes and helps. In this particular case, the fire department put out a call for help, and fire agencies from the peninsula and from here went over to help. And guess what, when they got there? This fire truck would not connect to that fire hydrant. They did not have anything standardized. This is 1991. Second lesson we learned is that the emergency services, they couldn't talk to each other. Sheriff couldn't talk to city police, city police couldn't talk to fire, and fire couldn't talk to those coming in. They had some real headaches with that. And lastly, I think we learned, when you think of the after-action, we learned that the local agencies, the regional agencies, and the state agencies had no real plan. So a lot of stuff took place after this in 1991, to the point where there's a thing called Firescape now, which really doesn't matter much, but it sets the pace for what we do and how we do it. So one of your obligations, when you sign, when you agree to this resolution, is that you're going to agree to follow the standardized emergency management system, SIMS, as we call it. And the government code specifically says that if you want to participate in emergency preparedness, you need to standardize and be part of this. And for two reasons. One, if you want to prevent it from happening, or keep something from happening, and allow for response, you have to agree to this. And two, if you want to recover cost. So there's the two parts that we care about a lot, spending money and not losing money on it. So we will practice the SIMS basis here, and then NIMS, which is the National Information System, which is the big umbrella. We have a subsection, I'll tell you a little bit about that in a minute, but SIMS is the mothership. And for here, I can tell you, our police services and our fire services, they practice that today. Our hospitals practice that today. We practice it in so many different areas that it has become standardized. And nationwide, we can thank Oakland because of what happened there for those lessons learned. So the next problem we have, and it's important to recognize, is that no one talks the same language. Acronyms are wonderful, especially in emergency management. They like to have an acronym for acronyms. We in the city of Mountain House will talk the same language as those people in San Joaquin County Operational Area. We will speak the same language in the state of California when it comes to emergency management, and we will speak the same language when it comes to the states, the United States. And a good example would be Los Angeles. Our fire department, our fire chief representing this area, went down and was a strike force chief. He did not have to go spend two weeks with Los Angeles to learn how they operate. By him saying, "I'll do it," he's appointed, he goes down, he takes charge, just as if it was right here in Mountain House, because of the standardized process that we have. We will continue to do that, and we, we, I put in the back of the emergency plan, a lot of acronym definitions. So if you ever get stumped, go to the back of that, 114 pages later, you might actually have learned them all. Let's talk about the responsibilities. We have here a local responsibility first. We, as a council, and the city manager, and all the employees that are in here, we have a local obligation to do what's right here first. As soon as we find out, ooh, we can't do it, which doesn't take long. I'll pick on Doug, which everybody else has tonight, so I might as well. Doug does not have a dump truck here in town. He, if he needs a dump truck to do something for an emergency, he's going to have to borrow it. And that's how this system works. We start local, and we work our way up. Once it's beyond your guys' ability to manage this, we will then, and the mayor does this, activate a local emergency, which then kicks in San Joaquin County Operational Area. That's when we go to the county and say, hey, we need help. They do not say no. The Office of Emergency Services says, what do you need? And then they start using their resources and what they have. And it's almost seamless, but there's some paperwork involved. But we'll still do that. Then we work our way up. You can see the circle all the way around, and when we think about that circle, the local stuff is, all the cities in this county would help each other. Then we start going to the region, to the state, then we start federal. And then, when you look at that circle, I have done every part of that, including tribal, territorial. People don't realize that we have territorial and tribes within this state that have resources which are federally connected. So there's so much to it. But that circle is how we follow it, and this is what we have the plan for. So the SOP, the standard operating procedure, is kind of important, because this is where we actually tell the employees and everyone else that's involved in this, that one, the city manager is in charge. We already know that. The city manager in charge of any local emergency. But when we think about this particular standard deal, the city manager will be responsible for reviewing this on a regular basis. He'll delegate that to the appropriate person, but it'll be reviewed, and I don't mean annually. We should be looking at this every time we have something happen out of the ordinary. Did we meet this? Do we have it? And I'll talk a little bit more about those. But part of it, I wanted to list a couple things that will happen with the resolution. We will develop a procedure for reviewing these things. It won't be just one of those, oh, we should. There's a, there's a way to keep track. We will keep not only the plans updated, but we will keep you as a council updated. City manager will do that in whichever means he sees fit. Then we will be part of the operational area for San Joaquin County, which, by the way, we are not yet. That meeting's coming up in two weeks. We will present this to them, the County Board of Supervisors, and five key cities, which is almost everybody. They agree to allow us to be part of the operational area. We're not going to be turned down, because we're doing all the things we're supposed to. We will develop a public information process that's effective during response. And you guys will hear that later on through our communications director, through Crisis Communications. So this is part of what will take place. Model low, what if, emergency preparation. San Joaquin County identified about 18 things that could happen here in Mountain House, and I've given you a list of those. Oh, see, there, Doug, thanks. We have natural disasters, and then they call them technological or national security, but I call them natural disasters and man-made disasters. There are two types. So when we look at all these things, and I don't want to pick on anybody sitting on this particular council, but in my 40 years in this county, I've seen almost every one of those things, except for nuclear. You know, I've not seen that happen, but I can tell you tire fires in Tracy, I worked in Manteca, but I got assigned for 30 days to the Royster tire fires. Who would have thought in my career I would have been doing that? So you just don't know what will take place. When we think of the list that I have here, we could add some stuff, we can remove some of the stuff, but we have to be prepared and thinking about these things. And we call it just what if. Once we activate this plan, there's a very strategic, and this is the ICS, Incident Command System, this is the subsection of SIMS. And if you look at this, there's two parts that are super important. The emergency director is the city manager. He's the emergency director, and his absence is usually the deputy, and then there's some fallbacks, the fire chief, and the, and public safety. But the one that should be most interest to you is the policy group. Now, the policy group is mandatory, we have to have that. And it's for two reasons. One, you folks, and I, and I say this with some passion, your job is not to get in the way of the emergency. You want to go out and help fill sandbags? I don't think that's a bad idea, because we usually do that far away from the emergency. But the rest of the time, we will ask you to go to a secondary location in this building. This would be the command center in a sense, and you guys would meet upstairs in the city manager's conference area, and you will have firsthand, real information. And your job is not to get in the way, but to create policy as needed, give direction as needed, and finally, remove obstacles from those who are trying to do their jobs. Once you get that stuff done, you guys are golden. There'll be other tasks, trust me, the toughest job will be yours. And I'll tell you why it's yours, because I know a couple of you will want to get up and go out and help. There'll be a time, but the first seat you take is the one of policy. And you can see the other people that sit down there, as we have the city attorney to help us advise on what can happen, what's next, because there's a lot of stuff that has to happen when you have a declaration of an emergency. It's a tough job. And then we assign somebody to you specifically, so you get good firsthand information, and they're kind of babysitters to make sure that you don't walk around and do something. I just watched the newscast where you see where the policymakers get up in front of the cameras before they check with the people? Yeah. That's bad. It's bad for you, and it's bad for the community. So plan maintenance is important. So for probably 14 years, the best I can find, there'd been iteration of this very plan. And of those, they were brought forward by people who believed, they had looked at them, and all they did was change the names, fill in the blanks, because the county was really more responsible for it. So this is a complete yet separate plan, and there'll be things in there to include training. I know the mayor has mentioned more than once, are we going to have a tabletop exercise? Yes. You're going to have training, you're going to have educational stuff almost on an overload basis, because we want you to be so well-educated that when someone brings you a problem, you're ready to deal with it. Plus, I think that we can probably, because we're so new, we can do a better job than a lot of cities do today. Example would be, we do not have, as far as I know, and I've asked the question, and the response was, I'll get back to you, we do not have a COOP, Continuity of Operations Plan. We will. And that Continuity of Operations Plan really comes to heart, because I was in another city where their city hall collapsed, and they said, well, what do we do? If you have this plan, first, your data's all protected, because that's how we live today, digitally. You should be able to set up a temporary place within 12 hours to allow the public to know we're still in business, and within 36 hours, be fully functional. Easy-peasy around here. We have resources. But it's got to get done. So moving to the last part. If you look at the order that this is in, when I showed you the first slide, it was first emergency management, then the city seal, and then the city council. That's changed. We think that you're the most important part of this plan. We think that because of your individual knowledge and your experience, your will, and the public, the people have said they want to put you in charge. All the decisions you make here at the city council is very, very important. It's important for the city. This one affects people's lives, so we'll take it serious, and we, we would hope that you do, too. You're going to have some things come up associated with this, isn't free, although right now, we're doing everything pretty much in-house, which makes it pretty nice. We want to make sure that the drills and the exercises and stuff we have will come, and they will be, so it's not just for you, but for staff. In addition to that, we want to make sure that we don't make any errors. As a side note, Karen, who's not here with us today, from, she's our utility manager of the wastewater treatment plant, has to have a similar plan, and we're starting, it's been done, we're just updating it. So we're already ahead of the game there. So my final thing is that we have to go back to the agenda, the official part, where I will ask you for, we recommend that you sign the resolution, vote for it, and you move forward. Any budgetary or fiscal impacts will come later. We did, we do have some stuff that'll be in this upcoming budget for you to review and see if it's appropriate. And with that, I have to thank a couple people. Dr. Chris Stevens has spent a lot of time. Chris, you've met Chris, he's the crossing guard guy, has spent a lot of time with editing and gathering. We've had the Office of Emergency Services review this, and make sure we try to get it into compliance with being a city versus that of a county. We also have had the fire chief and the police chief look at it, and we have looked at it as a team. So we're pretty fortunate, and we think we have a good product here for you, and it's one that we can mold to what you need, and still provide a great service for the community without a lot of hiccups. So with that, that's the end of presentation. I did do it quicker than Doug, and I appreciate that. And Hamed coached me on how to do this, so we're all good. So now, I'll answer any questions you may have, and then I'm going to ask that again that you review the resolution.
Question, Harrison. Oh, Tingle, first.
Thank you for your presentation. And emergency contingency plans, that's near and dear to me. I know that it was years and years back, we were following a process, we were a lot smaller, but I felt safer. And as we've grown, we really should be getting back into that, because we have more people to protect and serve. So I'm really in agreeance with that. And so my question or concern is that, part of this process, will we get to an official point where we will be, because we have so many villages now, let's say that we had to evacuate, that there is emergency contingency by village or what have you, the best routes to take, so people will, and their families can feel safe, where it's written down with a go-to. I know a lot of times, we work with the kids on a smaller level, but we need to work with families, so our whole city feels safe in case something happens, everyone doesn't head to the same road, to the same street and what have you, because that's mayhem.
Yes, is the answer to your question. And what happens is that we have a hazard mitigation plan that is being worked on as we speak, because before, it was a county-wide. we speak, because before it was a countywide. Now the county is requiring each city have one. So in the past, only the city of Stockton and the city of Tracy has had them. Part of that plan is to look at what is the best for what we can predict. And so, can we tell everybody this is the evacuation route? Not a hundred percent, but we have some great systems that are in place or starting. One of them is our Everbridge. Hopefully you all get those notices, but we encourage everybody in the community to sign up for Everbridge. It is a real-time notification, and we can specifically narrow it down to neighborhoods, right down to the entire community, and we've been using it. So it's super important that that's our first line of communications, that direction. And the rest is some of the volunteer organizations that are in the city. CERT, which I think that was mentioned earlier, Community Emergency Response Team. There's a sub to that, it's called NERT, Neighborhood Emergency Response Team. And then there's CERT with an S, which is Student Emergency Response Teams. Because when an emergency happens in this community, and if it's of that scale, we will not have enough police, and we will not have enough fire. We are going to have to depend upon citizens to self-dispatch.
Any other? Harrison.
Yeah, Rex, excellent. I was very, very pleased when I saw this on the agenda and all the work that went in it. I'm obviously very familiar with nineteen ninety-one, as I was a new officer, had worked that fire. We lost one of our officers, and we also lost a judge. That was a nightmare.
Yep.
We had, not only did the hoses not connect together, but we couldn't, not myself, I was doing the law enforcement side of it, but they couldn't remove the fire trucks that were blocking because keys were in their pocket. They weren't interchangeable. And I think that's where, because of Oakland, that's where NIMS came, which is National Emergency System. So that way, everything's integrated, and again, like I said, we talk to each other, same language, everything fits. So some good things came out of that. Are we, is our staff doing any of the ICS, you know, the one hundred, two hundred, and then especially if there's going to be a supervisor, three hundred? Which we have to have. And then obviously, the IS, seven hundred, eight hundred. It's just great to have, a lot of them are, I think almost all of them are online now.
Yep.
And then once you have it, but is that in the works for our folks?
Yes, so, tonight is the trigger that gets pulled, and what that allows us to do, because we can now say it's the council's direction, you know. Employees that are here, that within the system, that have specific responsibilities, have to take ICS one hundred. It's, and it's being done online, we will require it, and through our human resources, we'll make sure that it's recorded and kept. But then it just accelerates up after that. Before we can get to the drills and exercises, we got to have people that fit in the boxes in a sense, and they have to have eight hundred. So I'll pick on Doug, because it's Doug's pick on Doug night. You have to have eight hundred if you're going to supervise anybody, and he's super responsible for a lot of things in our emergency plan, just like our public works director. But I checked with our public works director, and he's been through the training. So that's the advantage we have there. Obviously, our fire and police and our city manager and stuff have done a lot of that.
Yeah, and then I noticed you talked about having the EOC, and then obviously, wherever the site, you're going to have your incident command post out there. I just want to make sure that even our staff too, because it's easy to, even with the tabletop, to say, okay, you know, hey, your operations, your planning, your logistics, your finance, but they need to know what that role really entails. Because I'll tell you, again, I've been involved with, you know, with Urban Shield, and I'm sure you're familiar with that, where we got a lot of training.
Yep.
On, and you know, we're almost, almost realistic, pretty much, you know, live scenarios that go on. But one of the things I did learn was that paperwork with FEMA to get reimbursed, very, very important for those forms to be filled out, right?
That's Sarah's job. And she knows her job well.
Oh, yes, Sarah, yeah.
Yeah. Give her papers, she'll do it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anyways, I just wanted to throw that out, because like I said, I know it's starting, but I'm just, I'm so happy that this is being done, because we've talked about this for years, here and then, but now that we're a city, yeah, we have some ownership now. And I know that we'll still work with OES, if it, you know, goes to the, you know, state level and stuff, but something small, obviously, we might not have an EOC, but we're definitely going to have some type of ICS or something, I would imagine.
To, first of all, thanks for your comments. This will not happen overnight. It can't. But we will progressively move forward. In the interim, we still have our operating area, we still have very capable law enforcement and fire. So we'll have good leadership all the way through if something were to happen tomorrow. The Emergency Operations Center, the primary one, is right here. And you notice that set of doors that's next to you guys here? Those doors kind of close off, and this becomes Emergency Operations Center. Secondary one is upstairs, and the third is Fire Station Three. Are they ready to operate tomorrow? No. So we have an agreement with the county already for virtual EOC, which is really technology in its best, so.
Yeah, and then I think you mentioned too, though, that the schools, if we get some type of MOU, you know, with the schools that use their auditoriums or something like that too, if we had to.
Yeah.
Because I know the firehouse isn't, what's available at our first firehouse isn't conducive, I don't think. It even, doesn't even have the components to actually run, and some type of backup EOC, I believe.
Yes. So, you folks have some goals, your strategic plan, and two of those, one of those was this. The second was working better with the school district. Within here, we have several MOUs that we'll approach them with, and actually, the education codes said they need to help us anyway. But cooperatively, they have to be ready for the same emergencies, and we are the ones who have to deal with what happens with it. So I think they're very open, and they will help us. The sheltering is the big reason we have schools, you know, is to shelter in place. If we have that big earthquake over in the Bay Area, we may not feel it here, we may not have structure issues, but we're going to be impacted, because everybody's going to get in their cars, because they're going to be told to leave, and the first city they come across is right here. And Parks and Rec would be responsible for housing. Did you know that? Okay, good. She now knows we're ready. So, you're nailing it, and we count on you, all of you, to when you see here or something, you tell the city manager, and he can give direction to, hey, are we doing this? And we'll, we'll keep it up.
And then the last thing is, Rex, is I'm glad you mentioned it, you know, it's real important for like our council to stay back. It's hard, you know, when you have that experience, you know, I mean, it's, you want to get involved, but that is important. Stay back, let the professional staff do what they're doing. We'll keep abreast, I know they'll, we'll have a PIO, they'll keep us up to date, but I'm glad that you mentioned that. Lock people out of the EOC, and just the only people that are in are the ones that actually handle everything so that we don't get in their way. So thanks for bringing that up.
Experience brings a lot to the table. Thank you so much.
Disco?
So upon activation, who might act as the EOC coordinator? Is it like type of emergency service specific, or is it a designated role?
So you're looking at the chart?
Mm-hmm.
So the only two spots in that chart that are solid is that of the director and the policy. Everything else is dependent upon what the emergency is. So, you don't have to fill every box. One person can do all of those if they're trained to understand what it is, depends on the scale. And you can have multiples of those too.
And then the EMC is marked as designated under that. So is that somebody designated?
The city manager, when we say designated, there are some people that have taken the ICS training. So, we may have four directors or managers within the system that has taken a management class on that. He can designate at that time saying, you're going to be. We also can bring people from outside, because remember, we're standardized.
Sure.
So we may use somebody from the county for one of those positions.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes? No? Public comment? Negative. Back for discussion? Final comment? Motion?
Public motion to approve eight point three.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Harrison, roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you, Rex.
Great work. Thanks, Rex. And Doug.
Let's move to nine point one. Discuss the need to establish a facility rental fee waiver or grant program to reduce the financial burden placed on Mountain House nonprofits when hosting community-wide events or meetings in city-owned Parks and facilities. Mayor calls on Laura Johnston.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Sue, Vice Mayor Tingle, members of the council. Staff recommend that council discuss the need to establish a facility rental fee waiver or grant program to reduce the financial burden placed on Mountain House nonprofits, otherwise known as CBOs, community-based organizations, when hosting citywide events or meetings in city-owned and operated parks and facilities. Several nonprofit CBOs host numerous events throughout the year in city-operated parks and facilities. These events range from meetings to fundraisers, sporting events, religious, cultural celebrations. Events in our parks often include food and retail vendors and live entertainment. Right now, in our current community rental policy, we do allow civic organizations one hour of free use per month. However, many civic organizations hold more than just one meeting a month. It's typically bimonthly or sometimes even weekly. So again, most of our events that they host, I'm sorry, most of their events that they host attract five hundred to nearly three thousand people, maybe more, depending on the size of the organization, the type of event, holiday, time of year. Most community-sponsored events reserve multiple park areas, ten to sixteen hours a day, sometimes two to three days, costing nonprofits approximately five hundred and two thousand dollars in rental fees. Several Mountain House nonprofits also host events and meetings in city facilities. Their attendance range from ten to sometimes up to a hundred and fifty. And most nonprofit events reserve indoor facilities for about six to twelve hours per event, typically that's like a fundraiser, or one or two hour per meetings costing nonprofits six hundred to nine hundred for one-time events, and sometimes thirty-five to a hundred and fifty a month for their meetings. So right now, in order to get a city permit to rent a facility, whether it's a park or an indoor, we also require that the organization provide insurance. Sometimes, when applicable, they're required to get encouragement permits, county environmental permits, APC license, our new business license. We also ask that they get porta-pots, dumpsters, and onsite security. And these costs do add up. So right now, city imposes rental fees, we have administrative fees, typically our application fees. We do have a refundable deposit. And then we do have other fees that are applied to the rental, depending on what kind of rental they're hosting. We also have our hourly fees for the parks. We also have our indoor facility fees, which vary, it depends on what time of day and what time of the week. We have our on-call services. So in summary, CBOs have their own operating expenses, such as staff, marketing, materials, et cetera. In addition, we require all these additional permits and documents, and we impose our own rental fees. So since all these fees do add up, several CBOs have approached council, our former board, our former Parks Commission, and they've requested that we waive their rental fees, reduce the cost for their events. Staff conducted a facility use fee waiver or a grant program, whichever way you want to call it, and found out that several surrounding comparable cities, as well as the county, do offer funding to CBOs to offset their costs. So staff found that many comparable cities offer a variation of a fee waiver or a grant program, including Discovery Bay, Dublin, Lathrip, Ripon, Malpetis. Several agencies allocate funds for the program, and some include the allocation as part of the department's annual expenses. Most of the processes require an application, which is reviewed by the city manager, or typically a designee, and then it's presented to council for final approval. And as far as the funds are concerned, awards are typically a fixed dollar, sometimes it's a percentage of the rental fees. Funds are usually distributed until they run out, or they're distributed once a year to only those who qualify. The fee waiver program is typically made possible by an annual allocation of funds, as determined by council. And they all make sure that the funding does not support the organization's own operating expenses, but rather supports the services that meet the strategic goals of the city for all of their rental programs. So in summary, staff recommend that council discuss the need to establish a fee rental waiver program or a grant program, and assign staff to propose a facility waiver or grant program that's appropriate for Mountain House CBOs, so that we could present it to council at a future meeting for adoption. And I'll leave it up to you for any questions.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. So this fee waiver would only be for nonprofits or whatever that live in Mountain House?
That would be up to you, but in surveying all the other cities, it was only nonprofits that received funding.
And would we have something in place to make sure that someone from outside, but tries to manipulate the system, saying, oh, no, this is Mountain House, you know, I meant... Do we have some type of checking balances to prevent that?
We do. Currently, we just added it to our facility rental program. It's a nonprofit verification form. They have to have at least seventy-five percent of the people on their roster or in their membership be Mountain House residents, and/or they have to have their principal address in Mountain House.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember, what's that, Disco?
How does this affect organizations like the Scouts who are kind of grandfathered in?
They're a nonprofit organization, so they would apply just like any other organization. And they were one of the organizations that approached us as well, so there's been several that have approached us.
Councilmember Green.
Would, my question would be, if it's a nonprofit that's coming in, however, they're charging for their events, like interest fees and stuff, would they still get the fee waiver? Or is it for organizations that are not charging for their events?
That could be a criteria that you would like me to put in it, or again, in searching with the other cities, we could determine.
I think it should definitely be something for discussion.
Well, that's why we're here. How much is it, like, the Boy Scouts use this room?
They use the lobby, they use this room.
And once a month, they get it for free?
One hour a month, they get it for free. Their meetings are typically two hours, and they meet once, once a week.
And so what are they paying for those once a week?
I don't have that figure for you upfront, but it is hundreds of dollars per month.
Currently? I thought they're grandfathered in?
Nope.
No, as of January first, they are not.
Got it.
Now, we already give these organizations a discount.
We do. We give them a nonprofit discount. It's half the rate of the resident discount.
Council, Mayor.
Okay, but, so my understanding, our charge is to, we need to sit down and decide and look at all the various scenarios and come up with something that will be consistent, that we'll be able to live with throughout, and then get the, you know, the council come into agreement and present it and voted upon, how everything would be handled and taken into consideration, because to me, anytime we're establishing any policies, they have to be something that we're going to use, you know, forever and not make any exceptions. So I think it is a discussion that we should have, and get an idea of all the various scenarios, various organizations and scenarios, so we have everything, we don't look for exceptions later, because exceptions is what break us down in a lot of things.
Right. And what we wanted to do was, we know you're going to start getting a lot of requests, you know, as cities grow and evolve and more organizations, it could become a full-time job just... a full-time job, just the phone calls back and forth. So that's why most communities have established this criteria. And no two are exactly the same, but the goal, like, it really reinforces what you just said. The goal is to make sure that you're not put in a position where it becomes a slippery slope. One person gets something, the next person comes in, and then 10 people who already had events came in and said, how come I did not benefit from that as well? So we're just trying to be somewhat proactive, anticipating the fact that this is just a natural evolution that happens in every community with their community-based organizations.
We could also say something about, you could, you're only allowed an award, maybe once every three years. We could put in things like that, so we could benefit most of our organizations.
Well, one option is to not do anything. Keep things the way it is. I mean, because I don't think we should, I don't even like the giving the one hour free per month, because who's going to be responsible for any damages and stuff? Like, when they come and use this room and break our $8,000 equipment, who's...
They would still be required to put a deposit down for damages.
$8,000.
Yes, they would be required for insurance.
I feel like if we made it free, people would abuse it. It would be too easy to...
I don't necessarily know if it's free. However, there are organizations, I think, I feel, in Mountain House that are nonprofits that are doing work, but they're not charging for the things that they do. So to maybe create some sort of, you know, to help out, but then if you have other nonprofits that are giving events, but they're charging the people to come in, then they're making a profit. They're making a profit, plus getting the benefit of being a nonprofit making profit.
Well, there's two sides of the, there's two sides...
It's not, it's not open discussion right now. It's, Councilmember Harrison, you're next. Well, I know, but I got a call on you before you just...
You go ahead and go.
Go ahead, Harrison.
I'm good.
All right, now, back to Disco.
So to build on that, I mean, there's two different types of free events, right? Or even the paid events. There's the free events that are self-funding, then there's the ones that are getting sponsorships. And if we're going to say, okay, we're going to give a discount to free events, at what point do we limit how much sponsorships and how do we prove how much? Because then it becomes racketeering of how much they're actually pocketing out of that sponsorship. If we're going to give them a discount, it's not to be to their benefit. Like, I guess if it's a fundraiser, it makes sense that you're, I don't know, it gets really gray at that point.
Yeah, I think this is a...
But it is hard, I would say, it is hard for a new up-and-coming nonprofit organization who doesn't have the reputation to go out and seek those sponsorships and cover a lot of these fees, because especially if somebody wants to come in and do a free, community-inclusive event that's not segregated to a certain part of our, or demographic of our community, and they want to do something in the benefit of the community, and to build their organization in turn, I feel like that's something we should explore. But again, it gets gray area once that sponsorship money starts building up, and at what limit do we set the threshold of how many discounts are free, or if anything?
Can you tell us which organizations are getting the free monthly?
Civic organizations, so right now, it's the Scouts, boys and girls. We also have the Rotary.
Girl Scouts, too?
Uh huh. So it's just those three groups right now that we have.
But I feel like for organizations like that, it's in the same realm, even though it's not a civic-ordained organization, it's something for the kids that we don't have elsewhere for the kids to do in town, and something, you know, positive for them to do with their time. And I feel like those are kind of a no-brainer for me to give a break to. If it's something that's serving our kids, like the same way Yak does, a civic organization, we should...
Yak's part of the city.
Like I said, a civic-ordained organization like Yak, if they're doing something like that for the kids, absolutely, we should give them a break, in my opinion.
Vice Mayor Tingle.
Yes, I guess for clarification, are we to come up with a decision and discussion tonight and come up with policy?
No, we're supposed to come up with...
Okay, and that's what I didn't think it was. Direction, but in order to facilitate that, which, that much-needed discussion, I'd like to get a list of all of the entities that are out there, so we can look at it and have an overall, you know, we only have X number of space, X number of days in a year. I'd like to know the universe that we're dealing with. And I think it would help us in our decision-making along the way, because some of them, as has been pointed out, what their purpose is. But one thing, as you was giving the presentation, that resonated with me, is you want to look at, to me, what organizations fit within our city's goals that are trying to help us, and that, those are the kinds of things that mean something to me, who's, what organizations are further developing and helping our city as we come together on this. And I would like for us to just set aside some time that we could work on this very important thing, because I think we do need to make a decision on it, because it's, the city's growing, organizations are growing, and we do need to have a policy and procedure in place, so we're consistent with ourselves.
I mean, we have a policy right now with just a discount with the rentals. You're asking for more, or you're asking, maybe we should consider more, because those groups are asking. But I, again, based on my own experience, I'm not actually that fond of the Girl Scouts, because, you know, all that profit from the cookie sales actually goes to their, how much of that cookie money actually comes back to the community? Most of it goes to their corporate. So again, I don't know that I support that.
I'd like to make a motion that we strike your statement. Don't be down to the Girl Scouts.
I just bought you off of Girl Scout cookies last month.
We sold cookies, but I just feel like, you know, how much of that is benefiting our community when most of that money actually goes to their...
But who carries the load on the rental? The corporation or the local entity? Because you can't, you can't use that in context if you're saying, oh, well, the Girl Scout cookies makes billions of dollars a year in cookie sales. But who pays for the rental? Is it the local organization, and are they given a budget? Or is it based on their memberships? And how does that work?
I can't remember exactly if they had to pay something or not, but...
Like, does BSA, does BSA or Girl Scouts, do they, do they carry the load of this debt? Or is it the local organization that has to fund it, hyper-local?
That's where I think each, you know, each organization, it's a little hazy, which ones we want to support and which ones are... Yeah, definitely, we need to start with the list, and it may be difficult to decide, you know, who deserves it and who doesn't. I mean, because we're giving free money away, basically. Councilmember Green.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question for you, because you said you researched other cities to see how they ran their organization, and how they did their distributions of credits or whatever. So I would like to see maybe how they do theirs, and just a follow-up, I have bought popcorn from the Boy Scouts.
You should have in your packet a spreadsheet. I apologize, it is awfully small to read. It is in your packet. But it does compare all of the cities and all of their different criterias, and they're pretty uniform across the board, but I can always send that to you.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good, just to have something to, you know, compare, to look at, just, you know, see how other people are working through those same issues. So it's not a, for me, it's not a bad idea, but it just, it's going to be very strategic how it's implemented, and so I'm not against it, I'm just, we just need to see it more.
Just do it right.
Yeah, page 386 has the graph here.
Councilmember Disco, go ahead.
Page 386 has the graph she's talking about. Quick question, the adult groups, like Kiwanis, Rotary, are they inclusive of this one free hour?
Rotary's included, but nobody else has reserved facilities from us. They may use the library, and I believe they do have some free space over there, but that's a different organization.
Yeah, I think it's messy, depending on, we would have to know how each company operates, and, because I won't name anybody, but I know nonprofits that, you know, where the owners or people are making money, so...
Well, we could make sure that the criteria just doesn't open up to any nonprofit for any purpose. It could be a nonprofit for a specific purpose that council wants to direct them to do, a specific that might meet the needs and strategic goals that the council has created.
But you know what I mean, if, for example, a nonprofit where the officers actually make money, because they can...
We could say, maybe it's just for a fundraiser. We could put that kind of criteria into our application.
All right, I think we should bring this back, this, we need a lot more information to make, it makes good decisions. So maybe the list of things, organizations in town that you're considering, and we should review the data she brought from the other cities.
Okay.
And we'll bring this back. I mean, there's no hurry. I mean, we don't need to decide today or anything.
I mean, do you really want to target the specific groups, or should we just look at the metrics of each type of group and create personas for different types of applications of discounts?
Well, I think we need to know which groups that we're talking about to know how they operate. If you don't know which groups, then we can't...
But I'm just saying, the next up-and-coming group that may fall into that same class, now we're going to have to have that whole conversation over again, whereas if we set a benchmark of, this is the threshold of what you have to meet in order for us to consider discounting you, I feel like if we start targeting specific grandfathered or established organizations, we limit the abilities of new organizations that might need the opportunity for this discount in order to thrive.
I can give you a really small summary. Right now, we have about 30 to 35 nonprofits that rent facilities from us. A majority of them are cultural groups that rent for large-scale events. Some of them are youth sports organizations, so those are our two. And so there's very few youth sports organizations, and the rest are primarily cultural, primarily events, special events. Then we have the handful, those three groups that rent rooms for meetings.
And most of those big events get thousands of dollars in sponsorship. I mean, I've sponsored, so, right? Tens of thousands in sponsorship, so I don't see why we're, why we need to do that for them.
Again, if it's a certain threshold of their production and the size and attendance of their event, and it's open to the public, and it's inclusive, not specific to a key demographic, and everyone is openly invited, and it's a common language that everyone can understand on the invitation, then I feel like that's something we should at least discuss entertaining, for those who are doing things for our community.
And these things probably will, they, I think, will be discussed when we come up with the policy. But if we, when we come up with a policy, I, hopefully, that it has some kind of criterion that if any else, if any other organization comes in, you'll see if they fall into this category, then you know what the fee structure would be.
Okay.
But I think that we could work it out where it's logical, and it's something that we could use as a template going forward.
All right, at this point, let's, I think we have given you the direction that we're not going to do anything right now. Let's kick it back, and we'll do a little bit more homework before the next time.
Okay, I'll bring that back for you.
All right, thank you.
That was very helpful, because it is an evolution we'll have to go through on this, because the one thing we can guarantee you is we have to have some sort of policy, because the requests are going to continue to escalate. So it's better to deal with this in one policy than having someone come to public comment every other week, making individual requests. So we're just trying to stay ahead of that.
All right, well, thank you, Laura. Let's move on to 9.2, City Manager Update. One minute and 40 seconds, right?
I think you'll have a record-quick one this time.
That's what it says on the...
One minute, I think I can do it in that time, too.
Let's go.
It's all up to whether Amanda can get the PowerPoint up in a minute and 41, so...
PIO.
Getting up there. So we didn't have any community concerns or responses from last time. We will, after this evening, though, we'll respond back. Next slide. Lot happening up north of Byron. A lot of it's going through design review right now, north of Byron. You've got the first, you know, 140 houses under construction with Lennar, but there's a lot more subdivisions about to get started. Neighborhood A7 is the hillside neighborhood down at the end of Nazar Goli, and they're going to, I think they've started their models now, so we've got more models happening south. And one of the final maps in College Park is being reviewed right now. Next slide. Lot of improvements going on, both in all of College Park. You can see, I think that's Prosperity. Is that the view there? I think that you see going on in College Park. And all the way up in Neighborhood I, up in the north, there's construction ongoing, and we're trying to wrap up the utility corridors that have been under construction, and hoping to get the next couple in College Park underway, as we go up the hill there. The fire station's very close. I'm going to ask Dave Sargent to reach out to each of you if you want to take a look at the progress at the station when Dave gets back from vacation. Hopefully, if you're interested, he can take you through there. As you know, it's still MHD site, not our site, until they turn it over in a couple of months. Pretty much done with the pump station. The bridge is open, but lots of little things left to do with the now bridge to Somewhere. You're seeing more traffic signals underway, getting ready down at Deanza and Grantline Road at this point in time, and pretty soon, you'll see some coming off the bridge to Nowhere as well on Central. And we're incredibly close, but I don't want to jinx it on the railroad crossing, so I'm not going to give you a date, but we're closer than ever. I think I had to sign about 16 documents with the feds the other day. Pardon? Yes, both Mountain House Parkway and Great Valley Parkway. We're getting really close. Make, getting closer on Hanson Village. Tulip Kids is going through the design process. Wickham Crossing, I think, is going through their final designs. Safari Kid, not Kids, is extremely close, right? Councilmember Disco?
Yeah, expecting operations to start April, and grand opening coming in the next coming weeks. It'll be announced on the chamber's website soon.
And slowly but surely, Mustang Square is coming along. Most of it's still underground and at-ground.
What does civil work?
That's the dirt, basically dirt and utilities.
So how many more months?
Creating and utilities.
How many more months?
Summer.
Really?
Yes, that's the goal.
Which summer?
This summer, well, summer goes through September 20th, so...
Summer of this year.
Summer of 2025.
Wow.
They're working on construction. The site map's done now, it's getting into figuring out construction, and I think they've got to get their financing and all that on Wickham Crossing. Aviara's pretty much done. Vida, I think you're going to see models are opening by this fall for the rental office, not too much further out. And then, of course, a lot going on with TriPoint, Shea, and Century, the new portion of Century down in the south, along with Richmond American. Had a lot of building permits issued just in the last couple of months. Little bit of work left on Bergamo, probably forgot about Bergamo, but also getting ready for New Home Company to start building across the bridge to Nowhere from Bergamo as well. And as you know, we've got, Neighborhood I is Lake Point, Neighborhood J is Lake View, I believe, or is it K? And Palm Lake is Neighborhood L. And then Town Center, there's some residential development that they're looking at there. So we've got about 4,600 to 5,000 lots to go up in the north.
Wait, aren't there four neighborhoods up there?
Yes.
What's the fourth one?
Lake View, Lake Point, Palm Lake, and what's the name of the other one? What? Lake something.
They're all lake somethings.
Lake Shore, I believe. Lake Shore. Lake Shore. I'll have them all memorized soon, I promise.
Palm Lake is Miss, doesn't fit.
Right, I guess they ran out of lakes, so... COVID's, COVID's back down to a nominal level after a little bump about a month ago, and you can tell it's the cold and flu season, if we have that on the next slide. You can see, we've had some more spikes in influenza A and B, but they're, now that are, you can always tell when the kids go back to school, because that's when it pops up, right after Christmas break, and luckily, we're not having a sustained spike like we do have some winters. Any questions? But we continue to check the wastewater every week. All right.
That's it?
That's it.
That was about a minute and 40 seconds. 9.3 is, we want to reschedule the regular city council meeting for May 28th. Somebody made a request.
That was me. That was me.
Margaret? It says call on Steve Pinkerton. Margaret?
I just delegated it.
Yeah, we had a request to continue, to change the meeting date for the meeting of May 28th to May 27th. We wanted to ensure that the full council would be available for that date. Can you go to the next slide?
Harrison?
Maybe the next one, yeah. We'll just go straight to the calendar.
I don't have my calendar with me. I left my phone at, at home, so I'm having separation anxiety. I don't have my phone with me.
All right, so that would be for Tuesday.
The 27th?
May 27th, if you were all available on that Tuesday date.
Green's good. Harrison?
I'm good for that date.
All right, tentatively, we'll save the 27th pending. Vice Mayor.
And I can let you know in the morning.
Okay, and then I'll bring an item back just on consent to set the meeting date.
And if we change it to the 27th, then the, the youth action.
Oh, they're, they're the first.
No, no, that's the first, okay, the 27th. It'll be here, so it's not a problem for them.
Okay.
Okay.
Bring it back next month or next meeting.
But I'll let you know tomorrow.
Thank you.
10.2, well, how about 10.1, Margaret? Is there a 10.1?
There's not a 10.1.
Oh. 10.2, Steve. Future agenda.
This numbering on here does not like me.
It's one of those AIs gone, AI gone bad, right?
Mm-hmm.
Twice.
We'll pretend it is.
Blame it on the AI.
It's supposed to automatically fill it in, so. Zooming out a little bit. So we're going to, we're going to be right, we're going to have, we're going to talk about traffic calming. Maybe we'll give a little preview on the trees. But the more we dig into the trees, the more we really want to be careful with this. Some other communities have run into some very expensive lawsuits. So we want to make sure we're really, we want to make sure risk and the city attorney have weighed in a bit more on the R and R. So we may or may not make it. The exciting one is to talk about GoGov and talking about really getting the word out on the, the best way for people to get their concerns and requests brought to the city. We'll talk about that next time. As a follow-up to your approval of the emergency plan, we'll be talking about the crisis communications plan at the next meeting. And then you'll learn a little bit about speed limit surveys next meeting as well. And then we've got the Value Link meeting. Probably should change that from seven. I missed that one, too. That's at, what, 1:30 or 2:00, the Value Link meeting?
Yeah, 2:00.
2:00, so we've got Value Link here before our meeting. And then we've got, we're looking to bring the strategic plan and team-building report back to you at that meeting. And hopefully, we've been doing a lot of work on ordinances that we want to get effective before the, the next July one. We're trying to get, make sure we've got a pretty good municipal code before our first birthday. And then on to May and budget season. So that gives you an idea of the long range.
All right.
I have a conflict as well on May 7th. I'll have to attend the budget study session remotely, if possible. Margaret?
Wait, what's May 7th again?
May 7th's our budget, uh, budget study session.
If we moved it to the, I'm not saying we would move it, but if we propose the 21st, is that a conflict as well?
21st of April?
May.
May.
Look at 21st of May.
National Indigenous People Day. Oh, no, it's June, sorry.
That's one voice, never mind. Can't do the 21st. We'll have to keep it to 7th. Right, never mind.
You'll be missing a few voices.
Could we do it the before, if everyone's available before the council meeting on the 14th? And just pack a light agenda that day?
We need to probably start by 5:00 to make sure.
How about you, Harrison, 14th?
Yeah, I'm good, because that's our original.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Green? Yeah?
Yeah.
So got that, Sarah?
You just have to come earlier.
All right, so we'll move the study session to May 14th.
Thank you.
Okay.
At 5:00 PM.
Was there another one? That was it, right?
That was it. That was it. We'll cancel the 7th and move it to 14th for the budget study session.
Well.
You guys said 5?
5:00. Make sure we have enough time.
I need a time, 5?
Yeah, 5, 5, sorry.
5, 4:30?
We'll bring dinner for you. All right, are we done with the 10.2 then?
Yes.
Let's go on to 10.3? Just kidding.
I know you're kidding.
Council member comments. Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, I just wanted, had a good time attending the workshop for the Planning Commission, that I learned a lot. So I'm glad we got to go. I would like to, Steve, when is, when is the fire contract up?
We're looking at putting that on the April meeting.
I saw that, because it seems like we keep, we keep extending it. And I thought we were going to get it.
Bless you.
What I don't want to see is, and this has happened to us before, where the board ends up getting something thrown at us and the contract's up like a week later or whatever. So now we're putting on the spot to make a decision.
We have extensions built in as well, if we need them, into the contract.
But, but when is, so what I'm asking is, when is their, when is their contract up?
Their contract, technically, we have two one-year extensions beyond June 30th.
Okay, okay.
But we still wanted to get it, we, we wanted to bring it back before we opened the new fire station on July 1st. And before budget was the goal, was to bring it back before the budget study session.
And then also, are we, are we tracking with the warehouse if we're getting any tenants in there? Or if they're just staying dormant, empty, and maybe now we're getting blight from it or vandalism? Because I was thinking, you know, maybe we could charge for the, the owner of that building for those empty spaces. As they're starting to do in the city of Stockton right now.
Well, one thing we have that the city of Stockton does not are those special taxes. So whether there's anyone in that building or not, we get about $350,000 a year in special tax from those buildings.
Woo-hoo.
Okay, so you're saying, so if it was occupied, we wouldn't be getting any more?
We get the same either way.
Okay.
Well, unless there's sales tax.
Right, unless there's sales tax or if they put in additional, you know, fixed improvements. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of incentive for them to lease those buildings because they have pretty high fixed costs. And so they, they are regularly reviewing potential leases. But the, the owner's focus has been on getting a good long-term tenant in the building. And I think there is one space where they may get an applicant for a non-industrial-type use, you know, a sports use of some type. So there is a lot of activity going on, but nothing that's been able to happen yet.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have a comment and/or, or a question. For the Mustang Square and a lot of the other locations, is there a possibility or consideration that we put up a little sign or what have you? Estimated completion date, estimated open date? So the public at large knows exactly what's going on? You know, they'll, they'll know that what quarter, what year, what, an estimate of what's going on to keep our residents more informed as to when locations might open? Is it possibly that we can do that?
We can ask the owner to put something up.
Oh, I'm talking about, oh, the owner of, okay, like Mustang, we can ask them?
Right, because we have no control over when they're going to complete the site is the challenge. But we certainly can ask the owner to, you would think if they're, I mean, they're still trying to lease the building, it would be good if they could put something up.
Just somewhat of a status, so the community knows.
Yes. Yeah, we'll see what we can get. I'll contact the owner again and see if they can communicate a little bit better. And it'd be great if they could put a sign up. You'd think maybe their real estate broker would want to do that, so.
An informed community is normally a happier community.
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Green?
I don't have any comment.
All right, Councilmember Disco?
Yeah, I have a request from the Mountain House High School Rockets Club. They're trying to qualify for the national rocket competition, and they've been using Questa Elementary. But apparently, some of the rockets have landed in homes and on top of the school. So they are asking if we can advocate with them for the developers to loan Central Park 3.0 fields that we possibly prepared for the cricket club area where it's safe. They, they use an F motor, I haven't Googled that. But they need to be able to launch two to three times, different days, depending on weather and wind. Otherwise, they're currently having to commute two hours away to Hollister.
We can talk offline, because it's technically our property. So we have to talk to the risk manager about that.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you the contact after the meeting.
And if they want to make contact with me, we can see whether that's something we can do.
Cool, thank you. And also thanks to the staff for the great presentations and preparation tonight.
All right. Do we want to hear from the city attorney?
Well, I don't have anything to offer anyway, so.
All right, then we don't. City manager, last comment? No?
No comment.
All right, well, let's adjourn to March 26th at 7:00. We don't know if we have a closed session or not. 7:00 as of now.